Item 8.2, request authorized city staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for Phase Two of the Stone Lake addition.
Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Stone Lake addition is located at the northeast corner of Schilling Road and Ohio Street, and the final plat of that property was reviewed and approved by the planning commission in 2010. The approved platted area covers 100 acres and is divided into 154 residential building lots and seven commercial building lots, and it is a mixed-use subdivision. There are five different zoning designations within the subdivision, including single-family residential, multifamily residential, neighborhood shopping, and planned service commercial. In 2012, the city commission approved a resolution of advisability and authorization, creating a special assessment benefit district for street water and sanitary sewer improvements serving Phase One of the addition, and that was primarily lots along the main street entering in off of Ohio. There are 34 residential building lots in that first phase. Eleven of those 34 are higher-priced lots that run up against the lake, and there are, the remaining lots are what we refer to as interior lots. At last check, there are 17 lots occupied with homes and 17 that are currently vacant in that initial phase. So, the initial street water and sewer improvements were put in through special assessments approved in 2012. Mr. Doug Bradley has purchased a number of lots in the Stone Lake addition from the original developer. He is seeking the city commission's approval to utilize special assessment financing to finance construction of the improvements needed to serve the additional lots. So, the area highlighted in yellow there is what Mr. Bradley has purchased. That street is not in, nor are water sewer lines extended that far east, and so, the plan would be to open up 17 additional lots for single-family home construction. So, we pointed out to you that in the past three years, you have approved special assessment financing for River Trail Second Edition north of Magnolia Road. That had 42 lots. Phase Two of Grand Prairie, north of Cedar Ridge Drive, that's 14 lots. 16 lots in Pheasant Ridge Edition Number Three, north of East Crawford, and then more recently, Magnolia Hills Estates Number Two, and Wheatland Valley Edition along Markley Road. This is the last application that we have in our line or queue of special assessment requests. This is the last one that we've received to come before the commission. The estimated cost from the petitioner's engineer for these improvements was $481,000. Our engineering department rolled in engineering expenses and the city's administrative expenses, and so, their estimate for total assessments would be $554,880. On page four of your report is the life cycle estimated costs for the Stone Lake addition Phase Two. One thing that you would want to take note of is the estimated total maintenance costs are much lower for the streets than they had been in the other subdivisions, and the public works department indicates that is because Stone Lake has concrete streets, whereas the other ones you looked at had asphalt streets, which had more frequent maintenance over that 30-year period. As we looked at tax revenue, again, what we estimated was based on what the city's share of property tax revenue would be, and the estimated property tax revenue was pretty close to what was going to be generated by Wheatland Valley, even though there were fewer lots, because the assessed valuation of these homes is expected to be higher than it was for Wheatland Valley. On page five is a summary of the annual maintenance costs for utility lines, and again, utilities division estimates the useful life of the pipe to be placed in the subdivision to be 60 years, and there will be minimal costs associated with the pipelines within this subdivision over that 50-year period. This is a standalone phase. There are no expenditures that would go to properties outside of Phase Two for special assessment should that be approved. You'll see on page six that we've highlighted boxes one and two. The projected market price of the homes in this phase are a little bit higher than what you've seen in the other requests that have come before you. They're estimating that the lot prices of $35,000 to $40,000 for the interior lots and $75,000 to $85,000 for the lakeside lots, with the home prices in the $250,000 to $300,000 range for interior lots and the $350,000 to $450,000 range for lakeside lots. And then, we've indicated there the number of existing homes on the market in those price categories. In terms of the projected rate at which these would sell, we would defer that question to the developer, what their projections are. We did not see any innovative housing projects that were being proposed. These are single-family residential dwellings. There are lots along Ohio Street that are zoned for multifamily use, but that's not part of this Phase Two. The estimated assessments were $32,460 per lot, and that is pretty much in the range of the assessments that we've seen in the last two requests that came before you for Magnolia Hills Estates and Wheatland Valley, so there's nothing out of the ordinary in terms of their projected assessments per lot. We did want to note, and Dustin, I think you have that aerial photo that has the benefit district on it. These lots are up in the northeast corner. Some of them did receive very minor assessments as part of Phase One. The lakeside lots received an assessments in the range of $2,700, and the interior lots already have assessments of $1,400 per lot. Those assessments are currently being paid, but they would be rolled into any new assessments that were levied. We did not identify any physical barriers or impediments that would make any of these lots not be developable, and this subdivision has connectivity back to Ohio Street as well as access to a hike bike trail that runs along Ohio Street along the west edge of the property. We did not identify any affordable, moderate-cost housing within this phase. As we noted, Stone Lake contains lots adjacent to Ohio Street that are zoned R2.5 for medium-density housing, but that is not part of this development phase. The estimated effect on the city's debt margin or debt load would be $550,000 for Phase Two. We've summarized again the available residential building lots in other subdivisions around the community. As we looked at price points, there's 91 lots that have vacant, that are vacant, that have infrastructure in place of those. We found that 55 of those lots were at price points comparable to the lakeside lots, and 36 of them were at a comparable price to the interior lots. We would remind you that you have recently approved the 16 lots in Pheasant Ridge, the 29 lots in Magnolia Hills Estates Number Two, and 24 in Wheatland Valley Edition, but those 45 lots in Pheasant Ridge and Magnolia Hills are not yet buildable because the work hasn't begun yet, and Wheatland Valley is preliminary platted but not final platted, so those lots were not included in the inventory. So, your options today after hearing from the applicant would be to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution advisability for Phase Two for your future consideration. You could postpone consideration and provide additional direction to staff and the applicant regarding any information you think is lacking, or you could vote to instruct staff not to proceed with preparation of an engineering feasibility report. So, this, as with all the others, is a discretionary decision for the city commission, and city staff would stand for any questions that you have. I do believe we have Mr. Todd Welsh here who's marketing the lots and has been working with Mr. Bradley if you have questions about Stone Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Questions?
Got a question for you. So, what's the length of the street in the new addition? Is that about a half-mile of street?
The total length?
Yeah.
Yes, but by the time you take the bends in it, yes.
Okay. And I guess my question is, at this point, our single, we have a single point of ingress and egress off of Ohio, correct?
Correct.
Do we, is, when you're talking about going into a cul-de-sac, especially for like, say, like emergency responders, is there, is there any kind of guideline in terms of how long of a road that we can create that doesn't have multiple ingress and egress points?
The maximum length in the subdivision regulations is 600 feet for a dead-end street. The master plan for this area would be a completely looped street, and so, the ultimate plan is for this road to come around and circle there, and then, there's a second street connection right here. There is something in the fire code presently about how many lots you can develop with one way in and out, but that provision was not in place when Stone Lake was platted.
Okay, but in terms of now knowing what the number of lots that are going to be placed in this, in this new development, I mean, I guess my concern is, from a safety issue, I mean, obviously, you know, the fire department didn't just de novo come up and say, "We're limiting it at 600 feet." I mean, there's got to be a rationale. I don't know what that is, but obviously, they have a rationale for not wanting to go any further than 600 feet with that. And while future development of that area may contemplate another access point on Ohio and one on Schilling, there's no guarantee whether that's going to be done in six months or 16 years in terms of when we're going to have that additional, those additional points in and out. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I guess, I just wanted to confirm, because I was a little bit confused. There are still 17 lots that are buildable in the first phase?
Yes, and the majority of those are the lakeside lots, but there's, there were 34 lots in Phase One, 17 are built upon, and 17 are vacant.
And then, my last question basically kind of goes to the absorption rate of those new lots hitting the market. On page four, where we've talked about the estimated property tax revenue for those 17 lots is $16,940 annually. I'm assuming that that presupposes that those lots have houses on them. That's what's making that kind of an income.
That is correct. Yes, that's improved lots.
Right. But if the lots don't have anything on them, if they're just vacant, do you have any sense of what the property tax revenue would be? I mean, is that $100 a lot, or?
It would be in the hundreds, at least in terms of what the city's share is, that it would be in the low 100s in terms of what we would get from a vacant, unused lot.
Okay. And then, just looking back some of the figures, we, right now, you said, what was the number, the total number of lots that you said we had available, like 90-some?
There's 91 vacant, buildable lots that have infrastructure presently, and then, there are 45 that are, that have approved plats, where you have approved going to a benefit district, but those benefit districts haven't been formed yet. So, the 91 is, and I would, I would point out the contradiction, which I can't, I can't explain exactly, but the, you will see on page nine that we have the available residential building lots is vacant, buildable lots that are being actively marketed. And so, you'll see that it indicates seven lots in Stone Lake addition that are being actively marketed, but our physical count shows that there's 17 available lots. So, of those 17, seven are being actively marketed. I don't have an explanation for the other 10.
And I swear, this is my, this is my last question. Do we have an idea about the number of new housing permits that are pulled annually? I mean, is there 20, 30?
I think in the, in the past year, it was between 40 and 50, but I don't know that I have an exact number for you. It used to be 100 a year, like clockwork, and then, it has reduced down to in the neighborhood of 40 a year.
Thank you.
We were advised to ask by one of our developers this question, are all these lots able to be purchased by anyone?
That is my understanding, but Mr. Welsh would be the best person to be able to answer that question.
I'll get him a little bit later. So, that most of the lots that are being developed here are on the higher price point end, or are we contributing any lots towards?
Well, if, if you could go to the, that phasing plan, Dustin, I was, the, this one here. So, these two lots already have houses on them, and so, they're not part of the benefit district, but you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, what we would call interior lots, and you have 1, 2, 3, 4 lakeside lots. So, of the 17, 13 of them would be in the lakeside lot, or four would be in the lakeside lot, which are the higher-priced lots, and 13 would be in the interior lots, which would have $35,000 to $40,000 lot costs.
Those are the ones that are already, already there now?
These are platted lots, but these, starting at this point right here, none of this infrastructure's in, so this request is to extend this street to here, put this cul-de-sac in, and open up this row of lots here and these four lots along the lake. This lot is already buildable.
So, the interior lots would be on a par with the subdivisions we just recently approved special assessments?
Yes, the interior lots would be closer. The lot prices would be on par with what we saw in Magnolia Hills and Wheatland Valley. The lakeside lots are more expensive than what you've seen in any of the recent subdivisions.
All right, so these would be expected to fill some of our current housing need as far as price point. I know the multifamily residential probably would be more in line with what we know we need.
Well, what we have reported here is the, the price points in Stone Lake in this particular request are higher. The price points are higher than in any of the recent subdivisions that you looked at.
Did we ever set an absolute amount? I know at one time, we did have an absolute maximum, but is that sort of floating now? So many numbers I know it's in here, I just can't find what I'm looking for.
You mean in terms of the, the price of the house?
Yeah.
The house price that we would subsidize? Didn't we take all?
It was more associated with a percentage that you might finance with special assessments, but then with the amendment that you made, you disconnected the price point with that, that percentage allocation.
Does this one fit?
Well, I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's a standard any longer in terms of it needing to fit. Previously, it was within certain price ranges, then the recommended percentage of the total cost financed with special assessments was, was specified, but that was amended and is no longer in the policy.
Any more questions for Mr. Andrews? Mr. Welsh, are you representing the, would you like to speak to any of this?
Mayor Ryan, Commissioners, and I think that may be the last time I get to say Mayor Ryan, so.
Could be.
Could be, I think, tonight. Let's see if, how we would start this out, to be able to say that. There's always a story, so I'd like to share with you guys the story on how we got here. My name is Todd Welsh with SlineHomes.com, 300 South Ninth. I represent the current Stone Lake addition that is owned by Dane Barclay, who platted that whole, Dean calls it 150 acres. Dustin, can you bring up the whole plat by chance? Let me see if I can learn how to run this little thing while I'm up here. So, this is Ohio Street here, and this is the entrance way as we speak currently. Now, Dean is way smarter than I am, but I'm very excited that I just found 10 more lots to sell, because my math on what I have listed, and in Dean's fairness, he did say he couldn't figure out why they were being marketed or not. What may or may not happen is, Bokta Construction just purchased two January 1, Kelly Dunn Construction purchased another one on January the 3rd or 4th. Those may be three that are there. Starting from here, this lot, this, excuse me, this lot, this lot, this lot are the only three lots that you could purchase today that are for sale in the interior. Everything else is sold, sold out on interior lots. Those three lots are left over because, again, location, location, location. Those are the three closest lots to Ohio Street. So, as I'm selling lots, the further back in the subdivision you go, that's why we put multifamily up in the front, those will bring less dollars, yet those three lots are the ones that remaining that are left. Only three lots that are left for sale. Those currently right now are marked at about $29, one's $30,000. Okay? The lake lots, let's talk about those. Those lake lots started from here. That lot is sold, that lot is sold, this is available, this is, that one's sold. So, we got one lot, two, three, and four is that large peninsula lot. I only have four lake lots left for sale today. That one has a house on it, that one's owned by Mr. Mays, that's owned by Mr. Bokta, and that one is currently owned by Mr. Bradley, who is here today. So, I only have four lake lots left that I could sell you today. I only have three interior lots that I could sell you today. Before I go any further, what I'd like to tell you is, the last time we spoke, as a real estate agent in this community, we have a thing called the Mustangs, we have a thing called the Cougars, and I don't care how you divide it up. A lot of people like to live where the Mustang, where you can go to school where the Mustangs are, and sometimes they do on there. The last three plats that this commission has approved, you better be a Mustang, because all three of those plats are lots that are located within the central school district. This lot and River Trail are the only two that have been in front of you, that if you wanted to move to this community and you wanted to live in the south side of town, your choice now would be either four or five lots left in Highland Metal Sanlit, which are expensive lots, more expensive lots. River Trail, as I count today, there are 19 lots, homes that have been currently built. Not long ago, many of you Commissioners that are here, we went out and we cut the ribbon. Since that time, 19 homes have been currently built, 22 remain, so that's been within a year and a half. Those homes have been built. By the time this, any subdivision gets put together, could be six to eight months, maybe a year. So, we're just kind of keeping up with the trend of what is expected of what's coming up. These back lots, so as I can, as I look here, there's a house here and a house here, and where that yellow line is, the lot, the current road stops here. So, the only lake lot that's available right there is the one that Mr. Bradley purchased. These two have built. There is no real difference between these 15 lots that we're looking to approve as we did Magnolia Hills, as we did Mr. Bailey's addition. The only thing we're looking at is moving them from Mustang land to Cougar land. That's the only difference of these lots that we would be looking at. What happens, though, are these lots right here are the bigger lots, which go up against the lake, so they fall within there. Now, Mr. Bradley has purchased everything with inside the yellow, and here comes the story of what happened. When Mr. Bradley wanted to build his home here, he purchased that lot, and I told him, I said, "Look, Doug, you can purchase that lot and you can build your home on there, but I can't do anything with these other lots," because he asked me, he said, "Well, what if I want to build on this lot, or I want to build a really nice wall right here as a beautification?" And at that time, I don't know what the number is, but if you drive out there, he spent a lot of money to build a very nice wall, rock wall, that is for the back of these current lots that are there, because he owns all of this property that's currently there. Now, let's go back a little bit. Mr. Barclay, who actually platted Stone Lake addition, has no interest in continuing on the Stone Lake addition. I'll put in a free plug for myself. If you'd like to be a developer, we would love to sell you all of this land that's for sale right here. He has no interest in coming to Salina to develop anymore. This is all for sale. This is how, then, we chose this piece over here. We didn't randomly say, "Well, why didn't we start up here where the multifamily was? We would love to sell that," but that's how this piece, I just wanted to answer the question of, why did we choose this piece back here? It all became because Mr. Bradley purchased that lot to build his own home, and he said, "Boy, if I'm going to do that and build a wall and get all that in there," he called me on the phone and said, "What would it take to put that all together?" And I did a market research for him, determined that there were not very many lots left, since I'd already sold all of the interior lots that were there, and I said, "You know, I think there's probably a need to market these lots for $35,000 to $40,000 to build 250,000 or homes, exactly what's being built in the interior lots that are there today." So, with that being said, again, I believe this brings a good mix of lots for the south side of town. This is good planning. We're not asking for 50 or 60 or 80 lots to be done. We're, we've had smart developers here in town. We're asking for 18 to 20, 25 lots at any given time, which is what we can bite off and chew and sell within a reasonable amount of time. I think you will have to agree with me that, again, if River Trail will to fill up tomorrow and somebody is looking to relocate to Salina, Kansas, there are no lots available in south Salina once River Trail fills up. So, I would be happy to take any questions. I would hope that you would approve the application put together in front of you for doing a feasibility study to make sure that we can get special assessments on this project. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Welsh?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this item?
Allen joke, 847 South Ninth. I actually came to the meeting today for entirely unrelated reason, so I hope you can, guy, maybe put everything else on the consent agenda. Anyway, that was a dig at you. I'm a convert on this issue. I have to admit, I sat in your shoes for 12 years and routinely approved every special assessment request that came our way, but during the discussion of this issue in the last few years, I've come to see this a lot as a, as an issue that kind of takes business away from banks. My thought is, you know, most businesses, if you want to do a project, you go to a bank to finance it. It's their business to evaluate, evaluate whether they think you have a good project. If they don't think you do, they say no, and I don't think the developer should then be able to shift the risk to the taxpayer. So, that's just my opinion I wanted to offer to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others?
Again, I'll make this quick, but I did, one of the things that concerned me were a couple of questions that were asked by Commissioner Hodges and the answer to those questions, and then, the response that was given by Mr. Welsh on the, regarding the future of where that access road for the additional ingress and egress. The original answer to that, that it wasn't there when it was platted, I think you may want to go back and revisit that, because as Mr. Welsh just said, it may never. want to go back and revisit that because, as Mr. Welsh just said, it may never materialize. And I don't think that a 3,400-foot-long dead end is going to satisfy anybody's fire code. So, that may be something that might want to be revisited. Second thing is, is a question was made about how much a vacant lot tax revenue, and I think the answer, I could be wrong, that I heard was, to the city, hundreds of dollars. And that's just not true because any one of these lots that are in Phase 1, that has not yet been built on, is actually zoned agricultural with a $100 valuation put on it. That brings in about $4 a year. So, the real answer to that question is that a vacant lot that, in a new subdivision, is zoned agriculture and the value is placed at $100. So, if they sit there empty for 20 years, you might make $80 in 20 years in city tax revenue. So, just a couple of things I'd like to look at. Echo what former Mayor Jilka said. We hear about all the market demand for all these lots and how they're going like hotcakes. Well, you know what? A free market works and let the developer take the risk. I'd like to see if there's demand for those 17 lots. It's a $400,000 investment. Build the road, take the risk, reap the rewards. We don't see any tax dollars coming off of those until they're sold, and if it takes six, seven years to sell 17 lots, I'm not quite sure that's a very good investment of taxpayer dollars. Also, the fact that we don't... We're not currently taking care of people's streets in front of their existing homes because we're busy taking care of new streets. So, I'd like to see more of a commitment towards fixing the streets in older neighborhoods. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment?
Joan Ratsliff, Salina. I guess I'm going to pile on. We had a study session here, or maybe it was a joint session with the Planning Commission, and there was a presentation about some redevelopment near... on Broadway. And, you know, that also included some bonding in the discussion. And I've been kind of following these issues and learning a lot. And my takeaway is that we don't have as good borrowing power as we could because we borrow a lot. And as a tax-paying citizen, I see a real contrast between building high-end homes four miles, five miles away from downtown when our strategic plan talks about some interior redevelopment, mixed use, and affordable housing. And if we put our, you know, our borrowing power in more of these things that are far-flung, then we won't have that to do some what I would consider very practical projects that are closer to downtown. That will benefit our city more in the long run. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address us?
Mitch Robinson, I'm Executive Director of Salina, Community Economic Development Organization. Like the former mayor, I was not here to come speak on this issue, but felt like I was compelled. Seems like probably six weeks ago, maybe even a little longer, I was here speaking in favor of the Magnolia Hills development. Once again, I feel like I'm compelled to come up and talk a little bit about housing, about a broad range of selection of houses for Salina. Talked with companies, company leaders have talked to the Chamber, to myself, others, about needing, again, a broad range. So, high-end as well as, you know, we need to develop more. I can't, you know... Commissioner Hodges, I can't answer your question you're going to have about trying to help on a lower income. I know we need it, I don't know how to do that yet. But I just want to stress my support for this project, continuing, again, what I understand it, the way the program works, and I'm still new to the state, relatively speaking, the risk is on the developer on these... using these funds. Is that not correct? I think that's... I'll look to the attorney here. But that's the way I understand how the program works. And I think from the report I was given from the early 80s, we've had a really a very positive success rate of those bonds not defaulting to the city.
Actually, I just had... I had one quick question for you to follow up, Mr. Robinson. So, how many houses in a given price point, say above $350,000? How big of an inventory do we need? I'm looking through my materials here in terms of how many we have on the market, and of course, I can't find it, but I wanted to say it was in the neighborhood of like 50-some that are going to be in the same price range. So, I mean...
How much is enough?
How much is enough?
That'd be a question for Mr. Welsh, I think, to answer. But... And it's going to take some time to develop those lots, there's no doubt of that, to get to somebody. But it is, from what I've seen, it's been the fastest developing development in the last two years since I've lived in Salina, I've watched the houses, as Todd talked about being sold along the street and coming out toward Ohio. So, you know, those lots may be a while. I think the lots on the north side will continue to move fairly rapidly. We've got a couple of Realtors sitting in the back, maybe they could comment as well.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Anyone else like to comment on this subject? Bring it back up here for more discussion or action?
You know, I generally have not necessarily linked the new developments to housing efforts in the center of the city, but I don't... What I don't like about this is the lack of a plan right now for developing the more affordable portions of this property, particularly after hearing that the original owner that no longer plans to develop that area along Ohio. I'm really curious as to how long that's going to sit vacant. And, you know, the south school district needs affordable housing as well. Now, affordable in the last year has moved up into the $250,000 to $300,000 price range, and it's a sign of the times, I guess. But this seems to be tilted towards a lot of funding dedicated for relatively small area of property with some very high property... I mean, high price points. While we're not directly connected with price points, I'd like to see something that gives a plan for this whole area, not just that far reach. This one just doesn't quite feel right. I'm not sure why, but it's... The last three, I have no problems with this one. I'm just not feeling it, which is not a scientific answer, but I'm open to be convinced.
And I understand what you're saying about the part towards Ohio Street, and again, that's going to probably take a developer that wishes to do that. Mr. Bradley, obviously, is trying to develop the part back there where his home is. Again, there's only four of the higher-priced lots back there that, you know, compete with the Highland Meadows and stuff. Hadn't really thought about it until Mr. Welsh talked about the South High District, and that does make some sense. 20 years ago, I built a house out south. I had already lived out there, and I had three children who said, "You can build wherever you want, but we're going to South High." And that was the only subdivision out there to build in at the time. So, hadn't really thought of that, but that does have some merit also. Again, as far as the risk to the citizens, the developer pays those, and I think we have a good developer, and I'm not too concerned about a default on these lots at all.
And I agree, I'm not worried about the developer defaulting. I'm worried about the fact that we're not putting in housing at a little lower price point while we're committing... We're committing our money, albeit in low risk, but I don't hear a plan for that front part of the property.
Other comments?
Well, you all know this is either... It's either going to be 4-1 or 3-2. And so, these comments are probably... They're worthless. They're not designed to convince anyone, and I know we want to get out of here, but just give me two minutes. In 1968, we had a population of 44,000 people, and we had 200 lane miles of roads to take care of. That works out to each person being responsible for 24 feet of roadway. In 2018, we have over 700 lane miles to serve a population of 47,000. That works out to 821 feet per taxpayer. Now, I just can't... I just can't get behind saddling, you know... Hopefully, I'll have a grandchild someday, and hopefully, that child might even be raised in Salina. And if they were, you know, I just feel like we are adding a real burden to the future Salinans in terms of what we are expecting them to be responsible for in maintaining infrastructure. And the cherry on the top of that for me is that, you know, this plating, now whether it was platted before we had emergency vehicle guidelines in place, it doesn't fit that. And that's why I just can't support special assessments for this development.
Any other comments? Is there a motion on this item?
Mayor Ryan, I move we authorize city staff to prepare a study on spatial assessment engineering feasibility report on Phase 2 of Stone Lake addition.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The item will pass three to two. Other business? 9.1. We have a request for executive session.
How long do we want?
Let's try 20 minutes.
Can we slip a bathroom break in there as well?
You take 20?
20, I'll go fast.
Mayor Ryan, I move the City Commission recessed into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the road annexation and impact fee agreement with Saline County with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at, and we're going to also take a five-minute break, so we'll be fine, at 6:14.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll be in a break, and then executive session.
All right, we'll be back in session now. Thank you all for your patience. We're ready for 9.2.
Item 9.2, comments for Mayor Ryan at the end of his mayoral term.
Vice Mayor Davis, would you come down here, please?
Well, many of you know, in addition to the time that Commissioner Davis spends as a commissioner, he's also a, he's a member of the neurology team at Salina, at Asbury Hospital. And a family man, raised many children, and he has a niece that he and Pam are raising at this time. He's a member of a number of civic organizations in Salina, and, as well as a church man. A point of note, while in the last year, he's been able to dedicate himself to expanding his skill as a city commissioner. I believe it should be recognized that he is the first Salina City Commissioner to take this initiative and the first sitting mayor to possess this claim. I'll read from the plaque we presented.
Whereas the Kansas Certified Public Management, CPM program, is a professional education opportunity for managers working in government agencies, nonprofits, and organizations that contract to provide public services and meet community needs. And whereas CPM is a nationally accredited management program and certification in which participants develop and strengthen their management skills through our competency-based curriculum. And whereas the CPM certificate is a nationally recognized emblem of management excellence. And whereas as Salina City Commissioner, Dr. Trent Davis met the requirements of 300 hours of structured learning with online and outside assignments and classroom hours two days per month for an entire year. And whereas Dr. Trent Davis completed a capstone project for our community that focused on an opportunity for progress improvement entitled reshaping the annual performance review of the city manager. And whereas Dr. Trent Davis received his degree in certified public management on November 30, 2018. Now therefore, I, Carl Ryan, Mayor of the City of Salina, wish to recognize the exceptional commitment necessary to commute to his monthly off-site training, spend two days a week at each training session, study, and complete homework in addition to classroom instruction, and complete a capstone project, and personally commend Dr. Trent Davis, January 14, 2019.[611.32][611.32](APPLAUSE).
I was getting very confused. I saw two up there. I said, "What?"[617.66][617.66](LAUGHTER).
Well done.
I have a couple brief remarks as mayor. I wanted to tell you that Salina's had a good year. Together, we've moved a great deal of business through our meetings and deliberations. Some, I think, can be rightly said are transformational for Salina. All has been done with our vision focused on the betterment of the future of our region and in the spirit of being the best service organization that we can be. We have all worked hard to promote a city that is livable, prosperous, and vibrant. Commissioners, let me thank you all for affording me the honor of being the mayor of Salina. I've sought to work well with each of you and the public as well, to provide you all with the freedom you need to express yourselves and feel comfortable and safe, to make your voices heard in our meetings. As elected commissioners, we are all prepared to stand with our faces to the wind, but I must reflect that I had not considered those closest to me would walk this road so closely with me. Let me thank my wife, Jody, for living this experience almost as emphatically as I have. Let me thank my family and my business partners for allowing me the space to diligently execute my responsibilities as mayor. And let me thank the many, many people that took time to write, email, phone, and converse with me on all manner of issues. This has been crucial for me. Commissioners care about citizen feedback, but the reality is that community engagement, Facebook, is often one-sided and inundated with input only from individuals with political agendas and those that express strong and negative opinions. To those that voted for me, that is why representative feedback is important. The City of Salina has assembled the best organizational staff in the state of Kansas. From top to bottom, I expect our employees to be enthusiastically attempting to be the best service organization they can be. Our department heads have impressively performed to almost every station in a year that has presented special challenges at some point in the year to almost every department. Thank you all for your commitment and your diligence and your pride in securing the very best solutions. We have filled several head positions recently, and there will be more in the ensuing year. And I'm confident that we will find people who are open and articulate and share a culture of quality service and a passion for performance. The ability to communicate and the desire to collaborate are keys at every position. I'm excited to watch downtown expand and watch people discover it and come back. I think once they get a little taste of this, they'll decide it's just a pretty fun place to be. The opportunity to stay downtown where everything is the hub, a hotel that brings an element of luxury that we didn't previously have here in downtown Salina. It's as exciting a time to be in Salina as I can remember. When I look out five to 10 years, I like people to say that Salina did it right. The future holds more opportunities to secure if we can keep collaborations going and if we can keep learning from the best practices around us and apply those that fit here. This means continuing to invest in infrastructure, continuing to invest in innovation, and continuing to ensure our industries are supported. Salina can be a lighthouse for how to develop in the future. Salina is my hometown and that of my family for six generations. I'm proud to say that you won't find a friendlier or more supportive community in Kansas. Thank you to those who voted for me. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me the responsibility of being your chair, and thank you for the opportunity to be an ambassador for the city. Thank you very much.[885.20][885.20](APPLAUSE). That brings us to item 10. We'll turn it over to the clerk.
Thank you. I will now call the organizational meeting to order for January 14, 2019, and I will do a quick roll call. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
I will now accept nominations for mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Ms. Wicks, I would move that we nominate Dr. Trent Davis for mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. I will now accept nominations for acting mayor and vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Ms. Wicks, I nominate Commissioner Mike Hoppeck for position of acting mayor and vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. I will now turn the gavel over to the new mayor.[983.94][983.94](APPLAUSE).
Do you want to bring your mic with you?
We'll find out very quickly if this is on. Is this mic? It is on. Thank you. I'd like to, this is, I feel bad, I have more words on mine than yours.[1038.08][1038.08](LAUGHTER). In recognition of service rendered by Carl F. Ryan as mayor of the City of Salina, Kansas, January 8, 2018 to January 14, 2019. Thank you very much for keeping this ship running. You do it in a very authoritative way, and you're always steady to your own calling. So we know what to expect from you, and you deliver. And...
Thank you very much.[1072.17][1072.17](APPLAUSE).
I'm guessing that gavel has special powers at home.[1087.83][1087.83](LAUGHTER). I am now officially what stands between you and food, so I'm going to talk quickly and probably drop some of these cards. I have to regulate myself because I don't wear a watch, as you may or may not know. So if I don't look at a clock, I won't know how much I'm talking. I want to thank my fellow commissioners for trusting me to be the lead target for the next year.[1121.33][1121.33](LAUGHTER). When you consider how many decisions are made, how many motions and actions, there's so many opportunities to really mess up sitting in that chair. And to your credit, yet very few. I think I estimate there are probably about 1,500 to 2,000 motions and actions that we initiate, and it's hard to keep them straight. There are some other, the former mayors in here. I see two sitting next to each other, Mayor Gilka and Blanchard, and Mayor Crawford. And I'm probably, am I leaving someone out? We have some county commissioners, who we did before we went there. My church member couldn't...[1172.08][1172.08](LAUGHTER). And I guess that's it. We probably lost a few to the late hour. And I would hope that my fellow commissioners will remember the sacred commissioner's oath. If I stumble during a meeting in this awkward silence, please chip in. Don't let me just hang there. I want to just very briefly thank some very special people for coming. The lady in the red over here, I guess I shouldn't use that title of the movie, but Lady in the Red and Black is my mother, Alice Davis. She traveled here from Washington, D.C.[1211.83][1211.83](APPLAUSE). And so she's the one who gave me most of my skills. And the lady next to her is the one who has cultivated them and nurtured them, my wife, Pamela.[1252.83][1252.83](APPLAUSE). She's also responsible for stamping out the bad skills, the bad traits. In the front seat was my, was my folks at work, my wife at work, my nurse Rhonda Haggard. I know she had to go pick up her son. She's the one most of you will probably interact with if you try to reach me during the day. She's very protective of my time, so I think after about two or three years, she finally let my mother's call come through.[1286.33][1286.33](LAUGHTER). I really do have a mother in Washington, D.C. named Alice Davis. And one lady who's not here, Cora Williams. If I had a surrogate mother and mentor in Salina, Kansas, it's Cora Williams. You probably know her from the NAACP. She took acutely ill two days ago and is not going to be here with us today. But I've had a lot of mentors since I've been here in Salina, and I'm thankful for all of my other family members who came. My niece, Sarah, who had no choice, because she's living with...[1323.01][1323.01](LAUGHTER). My cousin Shawna, my sister Bonnie, and I have another sister, Beatrice, here somewhere. There you are. I'm sorry.[1333.41][1333.41](LAUGHTER). And friends, new friends, and some very new friends who've come up from Wichita, John Hall, Director of Housing Department in Wichita, who I will be calling to get some advice. And Pastor Huggins from, I'm going to get the name of the church wrong, so...
St. James Baptist Church.
Oh, I know about St. James Baptist Church.[1357.74][1357.74](LAUGHTER). Thank you for traveling up. And I know Mr. Mike Terry and Joel Phelps are not here now, but I do want to thank them on behalf of Salina Regional for allowing me the little schedule, my cousin Mike from Houston, Texas. Excuse me. The hospital administration has been very gracious in allowing me to bend my schedule here and there. And, you know, we've practiced a rule of, I don't talk city business in the hospital halls, and they don't talk hospital business with me directly in the halls. So you can rest assured, the highest level of ethical standards is maintained. The, it seems strange calling you, what, you mayor emeritus or immediately former mayor?
Me, emeritus.[1413.36][1413.36](LAUGHTER).
Did highlight our accomplishments. We got off with some people who call a bumpy start. We took seating to a new level. But I would dare say this group of five could deliberate any issue that comes up in front of us. We've learned how to disagree without being disagreeable. And we have different talents. I can tell who's going to ask what type question, so I don't have to worry about a point being brought up because our personalities are just different enough that we're all sensitive to certain facets of any project, be it on a social issue, a business issue, analyzing. Sometimes you do it from the gut, sometimes we have to analyze it. But not much gets past the five of us as a group, and I really do appreciate that. In the past year, we've launched our downtown revival, which is really looking pretty good. I mean, now that you see buildings coming up out of the ground, and if you've stood in line to get into Old Chicago, I mean, it's, all right, this is what downtown's supposed to be like. We conferred certain basic protections for LGBTQ employees. We have done what one, actually, only one other city commission has done in the past 30 years, which is hire a city manager. Our city managers have stayed with us so long that there had not been a need. We've had two who've covered 30 years, and we went through a very long exhaustive search. We got input from various facets of our community, different groups, I'm blocking the word I want to use. But we went through an exhaustive process, and I'm sure we came up with the best person. We made him go through what was probably a gut-wrenching experience, watching other people walk into your building trying to take your job. But he handled it like a champ, and we're in good hands for the next at least 15 years. Sometimes, sometimes people get worried when we have 3-2 votes. And 3-2 votes aren't the worst thing in the world. That means that we have enough disagreement that we feel the need to discuss things. 5-0 votes are nice, and we feel good about 5-0 votes, but if every vote is 5-0, it really gets kind of boring. It does shorten the meeting, but it gets kind of boring. But 20 years from now, people aren't going to remember who voted in the 3 and who voted in the 2. The important thing is that we vet the issues, and if we have disagreements, that means people in the community have disagreements. So probably everyone's opinion is being brought forth. But some of the 3-2 opinions we've had, and I was not here in Salina then, but as I understand, getting the Central Mall off the ground was 3-2. Getting the Bi Center, now the Tony's Pizza Event Center, off the ground was 3-2. And my favorite one, the Clean Indoor Air Ordinance, which limited tobacco use in buildings, was 3-2. I know who that 3 was, Commissioner Gilka sitting over there. But that 3-2 led to other cities in the state getting ordinances, and we now have, what? A state ordinance because of what started here in Salina on a 3-2 vote. So 3-2 votes aren't always a bad thing. The biggest curse of being on a commission or in any elected office is that you have a 10-year plan, but you only have a two-year term. Now, two of us are elected for four years, but every two years, the potential makeup of that commission changes. So you never know for sure that you're going to have any more than two years to work a plan. And most of the things that we do in government progress how? Very slowly.[1666.51][1666.51](LAUGHTER). And after a couple of years, and now, my niece knows that, I'm now convinced that, right, government moves slowly. But that's not bad, because you don't want something this big making herky-jerky changes. So any changes that we make truly reflect the changes that we have in our community. And community values change fairly slowly as well. So we're just a reflection of the community that we live in. Our job is to be the conduit between these folks, and I agree, we get the best department head staff, administrative staff in the state of Kansas. And I can tell you I know that because of my CPM class, I've sat with folks from many different communities, and you don't know to what extent we are blessed here in Salina. I know you guys rock, and we're lucky. But we five are the conduit between the 50,000 citizens and our administrative staff and our city employees. So use us. We're just about done. My role as mayor, I do not get a raise, still work for the same $300 a month, before taxes.[1748.24][1748.24](LAUGHTER). Before our deduction, our contribution for the employee breakfast. I don't get a key to the building, unless you got one.[1757.63][1757.63](LAUGHTER). I don't get to decide if employees get snow days. Mike does that. I don't get a special parking place. I don't even get an office. Don't get a key to the executive washroom. Don't get any special privileges at home or at work.[1777.11][1777.11](LAUGHTER). But I do get the opportunity to be the guardian of the democratic process as we know it here in Salina, Kansas. And I get the pleasure of seeing all of my podium buddies come up during the Citizens' Forum. My favorite one, Norman is not here today, so Norm, if you're watching on TV, we missed you. Although this group is not as bad as a group of ladies who work the...